Just leave Alan and I.
We stopped at golf courses, man.
You did. Got Mike Freeland from McDonald's.
So 'cause you're old?
Yeah.
From McDonald's?
That's pretty close. Over seventy years old, he's pretty comfortable.
Where's that? I don't know. I was gonna say.
Call a meeting to order. Any public comment? No public comment? Okay. Uh, 911 group is here and they would like to talk to us about the dispatch. Go ahead, Troy.
I guess you can get this over with quick. I appreciate it. Um, we had a, uh, is this all right if I sit down here?
Yes.
We had a meeting on Friday again and we discussed some of our, uh, going forward to discuss some of our, um, thankings on the, uh, an agreement between the county and the 911. Is all right by handing these out, Nanette?
Yeah, I just.
If you take one, pass it down. This is a kind of a rough draft of some of the notes that we have taken during our study session, our strategic planning meeting. And this is just a rough draft of the agreement that we're looking at. And we've put a lot of time and effort and every member of the 911 board has put a lot of time and effort in getting some of these facts put out to make it, to improve the service of 911 and also make, make it fiscally, uh, sound for those entities, I think. Um, you can see here that going down through this agreement, what we've done is we figured out the cost of dispatching services under the sheriff's budget. And currently there's five full-time employees. And we figured out the cost and a lot of these, a lot of these facts and figures, or all these facts and figures were given to us by, uh, Don Weisman's office, so these are definitely factual information. Um, the total cost that we was looking at, base, and we based this on the average of, of the current hourly rate of a dispatcher at fifteen dollars and twenty-four cents an hour. And what we came up with is with the overtime, with everything, all the benefits, all the sick days, holidays, and all those costs, that the county's portion on that sixty forty split, because it's really hard to determine exactly how much would be, um, 911 related emergency dispatch services and the other, um, services for the sheriff's department. But we've put it at a sixty forty percent split and that, that cost from the county would be a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, we believe we could do it for the county. Currently, I believe in the, in the budget and Jeff, you have to, if you look at that, I didn't have current, current year's budget, had last year's budget, but I think that's a significant savings for the sheriff's department there. And also it'll, I believe, or we all believe that it'll improve the service. And it will make it a little bit more organized in your chain of command. And some of the other things, the highlights that we put in here is, uh, we talked a little bit about this before when we met, is, uh, security of the dispatch center. We have to fill out a report, uh, and, and file it with the Illinois Commerce Commission of the standards and regulations of the security of the dispatch center, along with obviously the jail. So we have to have our own standards also. Um, the dispatchers would be the Edgar County, uh, employees of the Edgar County Emergency Telephone Systems Board, which is us, the 911. And the director of the, of the Emergency Telephone System Board will make all personnel decisions regarding said employees. Um, we've, the sheriff's department and the dispatchers do a lot with the running a LISA plates, lead certification, which is a lot of law enforcement stuff there and the training. And it, all those, you know, non-911 related training, I think would still continue to be the responsible, it will still continue to be the responsibility of the sheriff. And it would be in the best interest of the sheriff to be in charge of those training. Um, we would leave the dispatch center currently where it is in the jail. Uh, we wouldn't have to move anything, we wouldn't have to reorganize all that stuff. And, uh, we've also added in there, that addition where we had that addition on back in wherever, with that current lease agreement, that was added on for all the servers, all the phone lines coming in, electrical, all that stuff for the dispatch. And we'd still like to, we still have to maintain control of that for that reason, because that's, that's what our nuts and bolts of our 911 dispatch. So we've added that in with this agreement. Um, and of course we added in the generator cost too. You know, we've, we've talked about that before, you know, the generator is a benefit to both us and the jail. And we can obviously, you know, agree to split those costs on that generator. It is very important to have that up and running for the safety and of the, and the security of the jail. But basically that's all that's in this agreement. We wanted to get this in your hands and, um, this is obviously not a, a legal document. This is just a rough draft of an agreement that we would like to, uh, for everybody here on the board to consider, to discuss, uh, and then we continue to make a plan going forward. So we, we would like to get the, uh, state's attorney involved, his office to, to sign or make up a legal document. And we can just call it an agreement or whatever he decides that he wants to call it. Be kind of a intergovernmental mutual aid. I don't know exactly what the legal term is, but I'm not a lawyer. Is there any questions regarding this agreement or how we came up with any of those facts and figures or?
To be honest with you Troy, first time looking at this, I would hesitate to make any comment of it.
Okay.
You know, honestly, I mean, you're probably all there, I just.
We need to put the.
I'm just looking at it. What was that, Jeff?
We need to put the pencil to the paper too.
Right.
You know, we just, we appreciate it.
Yeah. Cause that, you've set out, I do too. I like this.
And from a budget standpoint, we've already been moving in this direction, trying to figure out how best to approach it, so. Is there anything else that you would like from us? I mean, as far as details or anything, I mean, would it? We've tried to be pretty diligent on our facts and our figures, you know, like I said, we've, we've got that for the treasure and, and. Can, can you share the worksheet? Did Don give it to you verbally or did he give you a worksheet on that? Well, he, he gave us the worksheet, the spreadsheets and, uh, we can definitely come up with some of that if that's what you'd like to see for each employee. He probably kept it. I mean, we've got it on each employee. I was just wanting to know how much we figured for overtime and, you know, there's all those things.
The information that Don gave him, I, I've seen it at one time. I don't know that I, did you send it to me? Okay, I might have it at home, but it was, it was over two hundred thousand and it had like this past year. How much in overtime, how much part-time, that type of stuff.
That's what I figured, cause you, uh, you take the one twenty-six and divide that by sixty percent. That comes up to two hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's the figure that they come up with.
So I figured that. It's just, and if Don gave it to you, I'm sure it's, it's.
And I worked on it last night, based, and I come up with a little bit higher. Of course, you know, one year might be different than the other, but you know, that's a ballpark figure.
Sure.
So, you know, it would be a, a savings for us. And so.
And there, there would be, at this time, I mean, we, we're talking that, you know, the county's employee handbook, you know, their far deserved benefits and their, and there would be no changes in that whatsoever. Um, we would, obviously, we would work to have the best, uh, workplace, you know, that we could for those employees. We would, we would do everything we can in our, in our capital budgets that we could to improve their workplace. Um, we, we have done due diligence on figuring out their overtime and stuff, but keep in mind too that this would be something that, I mean, as a county board, obviously you're looking at the savings and the day-to-day operations would be, you know, kind of up to us if we enter into this. And if we go over because of overtime or we have a figure, well, the only thing that you really would be liable for would be that, that figure that we give you and then we would have to absorb whatever cost. But we also keep in mind too that this would be the first year, so we could be off a little bit. But I think there's some unique opportunities that we have by, by contracting this, these types of services to, to have some cost savings, whereas we don't see that opportunity right now with the current situation. But we do have, you know, the, the main reason is, or one of the main, the main reason is the, the service to our citizens. You know, and we continue to have some, some issues with service and we're continuing to, to work on those issues to the best of our abilities.
I attract dogs.
Never had a visitor.
No, right.
A nine visitor.
Guess that puts a new, puts a new definition. Watch dogs there, doesn't it? Is he with you, John? Something happened to Kirk?
I think he's brushing up a dog.
Snatching for money. No, 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 no. We don't have him, John.
That's your mascot, John?
And they're, they're talking a one-year agreement right now, right now. So I think they just wanted to present this to the board, uh, for us to take a look at and, uh, in the near future get back together and have further discussions and see.
If we have questions, who do, do we address them to? I would say that I would be a good contact for those questions and I'll seek the people on the board that has a lot of the, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say that I have all the answers because it's a joint agreement with the, we have people that do a lot of the financing and all that, but I will get through, I will get you the answers if you want to contact myself or Nanette's, you know, obviously available every day. She's the director and she was very instrumental in all this information and we appreciate all of her hard work that she's done for us. So she is, her office is also open during normal business hours and she would be a good contact also for everybody that's here. I mean, I think everybody really knows what my full-time job and occupation is and where I'm at, so. But Nanette might be a, a good contact also for that. But, you know, as far as our next meeting dates and stuff, I think Nanette would be fine with that and communicate that information to us, but, uh, we would definitely like to continue moving forward and try to, you know, progress this way. It's still fresh in our minds and our facts and figures are good. But I think it's a win-win for, for all parties involved, taxpayers, users and, and, uh, and the interest holders in the county board as well as the 911 board.
That's your next meeting? Okay, the next 911 meeting is October 6th and our next study session is October 6th that morning. Hopefully have, get, get, you know, either then or prior to that. I don't know how things go. Any more questions? From anybody?
Carl, would you like for me to get a copy of this to the state's attorney? For convenience or does somebody else want to do that?
I'll look at that first before we do it.
How do you want to do that?
Uh, there's no need to give it to the state's attorney right now.
Okay. Okay.
Cause there's more things obviously have to be added to this, but this is the general.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could, if we could come back maybe to the next study session on October 6th and then we have a meeting that afternoon, I think that, that would be a great time for all parties involved to be, to have that good communication too, also.
Time to work on before then.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for getting us on there early too. Appreciate it.
See you then.
Take care.
Come here reports, Mr. Reamer.
Uh, I think they've started on the roof at the Edgar County Health Department. They took a while to get it started, so I'm taking, working on it. I have talked to Randy about the window out at the Crickman Building. He's supposed to drop by the, uh, bids this morning, not really bids, because I don't think anyone else's probably been on it, but he's given us a cost for the, the place, replaced glass. Also a cost for just putting a panel in. So should have it sometime this morning. I haven't been in the animal shelter for about a week, but I talked to Dr. Frye and the, she works at the hospital, so we stopped in the hall and spent about fifteen minutes talking about the animal shelter and she's very happy with what's going on out there and says, she always tells me, Andrew's doing a great job. Other than that, uh, we get the, uh, I think, uh, according to the committee's, uh, English is in charge of the building. And so if you want me to, I'll just kind of, especially for Crickman Building, I'll take over and do that. And also I talked to Bob Wilson about the other problem out there. He does have the material. And when he gets time, he's gonna start on, I told him I would help him.
Material for?
The other stuff inside.
Other stuff inside.
Oh, yes.
So.
I got you.
Get acquainted with it.
Yeah. So whenever he's ready, I told him I'd help him, so.
The cameras out there?
Uh, yeah, I'm not yet. While working on that.
They've started, haven't they?
They've got the conduit.
Yeah.
Bob's got, Bob's got what needs to be done, so now we're waiting on rocks.
I talked to him twice and.
Well, he was supposed to be out there two weekends ago.
I know. I talked to him.
Okay.
Well, I will.
Okay. Other than that, everything's all good.
Okay. Mr. Zuber.
Uh, uh, basically as far as claims and stuff coming up, we have a few items we may have to worry about. We'll just wait until those things hit us and, and try to deal with them. As far as insurance, so we've got all the information, I believe, at least to the office holders and department heads, don't we all?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, there's, you know, there's always gonna be some confusion and questions on that. I think we have it set up for the, any employee to be able to call Augie's office in New York Billion or Kirk Good, who's our representative, and try to, try to figure that out. But there'll always be, you know, we, we've offered now instead of basically, uh, the, the four plans plus the not, the five plans, including one not taking insurance, now we've offered five plans plus the plan of not taking insurance. So, um, it's, that always causes excitement until everybody gets a chance hopefully to look at everything and, but the one reason we try to offer that many is everybody, insurance at different stages and phases in their life and hopefully that will give everybody a, a different chance to look at it. I'm always reminded in insurance, sorry. But it's, it's like one of those things, uh, what's always equal is not fair and what's always fair is not equal. And that's kind of the way I look at, uh, insurance guessing, cause it's just yourself. Somebody else may not think it's great for you or for them, but it's great for you and vice versa, so. Long story there Carl, I'm done.
Are you gonna step off to see Don today?
Yeah, I worked out with him.
Okay, cause I just left there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Were they gonna set up a meeting, like a meeting for people to come in for Kirk to talk with them? Or was he gonna go around to the offices or?
Well, let me answer that a little bit longer than just yes or no. Last year we offered, we did set up, uh, scheduled times for Kirk to meet with department heads and he was at various places at various times. Nobody showed up. So what we've done this year in our, in the memo to the department heads, we asked them to let us know if they would like to schedule a meeting with Kirk and he would be more than happy to make himself available. So at this point in time, nobody has indicated a need to.
Can we, uh, and I appreciate that, can we still have Kirk set aside one time?
Sure.
And maybe even, um, that way if he catches them all, but if nothing else, and not everybody likes this, but say like at, uh, four fifteen or four thirty someday. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Next week and say, hey, if something just happens to come up, Kirk is gonna be available at courthouse or wherever for, for one day just as a catch-all.
Yep.
And then if nobody shows up, in my mind, that's fine, because you've also given everybody a last chance and even maybe they didn't want to talk to their department head or they missed the communication. But if there's a way that we could get that to all employees, all employees, not even, uh, just through department heads, but do, we have a listing that we can get to all employees, right? If you could send that out to them, then. Myself, I'd feel a little bit better, but I know everybody.
The opportunity and they can't come back and say, well, we didn't.
Well, or, or even like sometimes mishap in communications, we all have it happen.
That's right.
And, uh, that a way there's, if we have a way that we can hit them all, uh, then, then if they happen. Thanks, Augie, for telling me about the other part though.
Yeah, well.
This way.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it.
Jeff?
Yes. Uh, budget and levy, uh, the budget committee met about a week ago. Was it last week? I lose track of time. Anyway, I did, was able to, uh, meet with the sheriff on Friday, uh, and go over his budget and he understands where we were at. We added here, subtracted there. He is still going to be available not this week, but next week for us to meet with him, because I said that was important. Uh, he said if you have concerns about any particular portion of the budget or questions, if, if you'd be good enough to text him or email him, he would be happy to, to either get back to you or think about what you're saying so that it, cause he's only gonna be in the office for a couple hours a day next week. Okay, so, but he understands that we've got to get together on it. I think we're in pretty good shape on the rest of the budget and, but I think we need to review it. We need to hammer out the levy at this next meeting and so I'm asking both of you, when, what works, and I know there's no good time right now, but we've got to try to, to look at it next week early.
Yeah.
If we can, is that a problem for you?
First part of next week, I don't think I have two other places. I'll, I'll look it up for sure and I'll check in and I think.
And then we can, you know, I've got to get you the rough draft, the new, the nineteenth update, so. But, uh, it's still around where we thought it would be. Uh, the other thing is airport, uh, last Thursday or Friday, Friday, uh, at afternoon, uh, Dale, Barkley called and said that he had received a communication from Malacca. And the feds have advised them that they would like us to clean up our application. Uh, so I got with, well, first of all, I called Carl and I called Ben and, and then we sent out everything to everybody. So they would like, uh, us to deal with that. I called the advisory board and Joe is taking the lead along with Barrett, Jake and Barkley in contacting Whirly's, uh, our engineering firm. And they're gonna be heading up, getting everything nailed down and making sure with Whirly what, what we're supposed to be doing and not doing and so forth, so that we can get our application resubmitted and adjust it to meet what the FAA wants to have done. Which would have been nice if I could editorialize. When we went to them three or four months ago, we might've saved all of this. But be that as it may, uh, thank God we have the advisory board and we're in a good position to, to take care of things and, and they're more than willing to do it, so. If anybody, do you have any questions about that?
So are they, they moving somewhat quickly on that and they're working on it?
Well, and they've got a date, uh, what is it, October twenty-sixth? That we, we need to have some of that in, cause that's when there's a, a meeting. Right.
Okay.
All right, so.
And our next advisory board meeting, is that the first Monday?
That'd be the first Monday, or second Monday.
Second Monday.
Second Monday, just before our board meeting.
Seventeenth, there's the meeting, October seventeenth. With the, uh.
Yeah, okay, October seventeenth, yeah. I, I thought you were saying, we, we meet with, uh, the advisory board meets on the thirteenth. And they knew it was a holiday, but they're gonna go ahead and meet anyway. Okay?
All right.
How about the cracks on the runway, anything?
They're, they're working on that.
Okay.
Okay, that's a, that's a Joe project.
Okay.
And I had it with this other thing I hadn't asked him, okay?
This one.
Anybody else have anything?
Yep. Just a little bit on, on 911.
Yes.
I don't know, if you've had a chance to look over this, you're a 911 guy?
Mm-hmm. Well, I just got this today, so I, I basically know what's in it, yes.
So I was just, I mean.
What was your question?
What's, I guess, I guess I'm saying, I don't know anything about it. I mean, so I was just curious what, are there questions though? We, we just need to look over this, do you feel? Is that what you're saying? And then before our next study session or at our next study session or?
Well, I think the, probably when the finance committee gets together, we need to take a look at these figures. And, uh, you know, I'll worry roughly, I know what the total cost to the county is.
Currently?
Currently, you know, I mean, pretty close. Annual cost and, uh, you know, we've gotta take a look at what they're saying that they will charge us to do it and see how much actual savings we are going to obtain.
And you have to remember, we're getting thirty, roughly twenty-eight to thirty-two thousand from them anyway every year.
Right.
Well, that's, I didn't know, that's what I was, I didn't know what it was and that's why I was almost, I didn't wanna ask. The confusion, but I wanted to do it during committee, so we'd have a chance to.
But yeah, the, the current cost, total cost is around two hundred and twenty thousand and then you get that twenty-five to thirty thousand that they're reimbursing, so you take that off. So it gets down to about a hundred, this, this is ballpark figures, a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And then if we enter into this agreement, our only cost will be the hundred and twenty-six thousand that they're proposing. So potentially there's a seventy thousand dollar savings.
Okay.
You know, ballpark.
And that's, I guess that was kind of my question. That's what I was looking at it very superficially.
Right.
And I just didn't know how, all the other numbers involved.
But we'll go in, when we have our committee meeting, we'll get into detail on it and maybe we need to talk with Don prior to that and get that sheet that, thank God I don't have it with me. And, uh, see if this is something we wanna do.
And we need to manage the savings if there is. And we need to put in the first year, I've got a mechanism that I'd like to go over that we can put it in to kind of manage what we're doing with it without turning it over, quite frankly, total, total, uh, to the sheriff and not whoever that is.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
We've gotta manage it to first year, so we do in fact wind up where we wanna be.
I know we talked about money, but is there any other thing that would need to be put in an agreement? Like who's in charge of the dispatchers? Who controls the dispatchers? Who has the authority over the dispatchers? Is that?
Well, that definitely.
The sheriff together or is that something that should have to be stated?
Well, it's somewhat stated in here currently that they're gonna be all the 911 employees and the director, Nanette, will be in charge of them. She'll have total control of them. But, you know, we, we talked with the sheriff.
Right.
You know, we've had conversations with the sheriff and, you know, he's, I think he's agreeable to it. And what they want from the sheriff is a protocol to exactly know how he wants everything done. Because, you know, they're not just answering 911 calls, you know, they've got the dispatch deputies, they gotta run things in the jail.
People come into business, stuff like that.
Right, so he's gonna have to set a protocol down, this is exactly how I want it done and that's what they're to follow.
Okay.
And if he has a problem with it, then he goes to her and says, this isn't being done, I want this done.
I just want to.
And then there'd be a mechanism to adjust that protocol or change it as need be. It'd be a flexible deal.
Right.
But then they would have guidelines on how they were to answer it and to maintain control of what was going on.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's other little things that have to be done. And that protocol thing is a big thing.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Cause, you know, that was something I expressed all along, that, you know, me being a former sheriff, you know, I wanna make sure things are being done the way I want it done in my jail.
Right.
Uh, Tuesday is the best day for you, like a Tuesday morning maybe next week? I don't know, well, anyway.
Well, morning's not bad anyway.
Oh, any morning? Okay.
Except Thursday, I got.
Okay, except Thursday.
And Friday.
I don't mind about that.
Okay, so anything else?
Uh, that's about it. Tuesday's always the best.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, Alan, we're gonna have to look at the funding and see if we can see.
But this gives me a rough, I, that's what I, well, the implication was, but I just didn't know for sure if that's what it was. And then also thanks to board work and personnel and how the change or may not change too on that. And, uh, and even as we get halfway close, I do think we need to have Mark involved in that though.
Oh, yes.
Yes, that's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing, the sheriff, uh, did send us and we went.
Go ahead.
Okay, the sheriff sent out and, uh, one of the deputies bring me this last Wednesday or Thursday and then I got it out to you folks. And that's a prisoner confinement agreement with, uh, Cole's County. And basically it lays out who's responsible for what holds everybody, uh, either liable or harmless for, from certain things that happen. At any rate, I talked to the sheriff about why this came about on Friday. And the sheriff, uh, said because of possible problems with jailers, that he wanted to have something in effect. that he wanted to have something in effect in case something happened and, and he would lose a jailer or two. And in that particular case, that would cause problems that if we, we only have five jailers. And if you lost one or two, the part-time are not gonna, so he wanted to have.
There's four full-time people.
Is there four?
There's four.
I'm sorry, four full-time jails.
So, yeah, if there's one or two, it would.
Yeah, so he wanted to have something in place for three months, that's a three-month agreement that would knock out what they're trying to do and so he wouldn't have to run around. He wanted to make sure that we had it, so we could comment and that he would like any comments that you folks had.
Now, is that in fact now, or is it?
Uh, it has not been signed yet.
Do we have an agreement with any other counties around, I don't recall, you know, committee and Jeff, you or two?
No.
Or maybe you or two, I guess, all three of you guys.
Yeah.
Do we have, like, just in case agreements with any of our other counties around?
I don't know that we have ever had formal agreements with counties, you know, you just, if you need prisoner, someone to take a prisoner, you call Coles County and say, hey, can you handle a couple ladies? Or say with Clark County or wherever, that's how it's always been done and they just.
And when we had the juvenile, I mean, they went up to Danville, I mean, that was, that was informal.
Yeah.
No, this gives us just a formal thing to hang our hat on for a few months.
Is this something though, that, yeah, okay, for a few months? Is this something we need to look at?
Ninety days.
Right, is this something we, though, that maybe, that we need to talk with, with the sheriff about?
Well, I think it should be passed through.
Well, I mean, so that, again, we're gonna go back to finances here, to where they're not, this, this is fine for ninety days, I don't have a concern about that, if that's what it is. If it's a tactic thing where we're looking on a mutual arrangement issue, just in case we ever get to a point where we have too many overcrowding, can we work? Or is this a good time also to start looking at Clark, Cumberland, Coles, whoever, Remillion? To see how much it would cost to put prisoners in their jail?
I think he already has that, he's called around, but I mean, he can answer that when we get together.
You mean on a permanent basis?
Sometimes, yeah. I mean, this was an issue that we had brought up like a year ago on cost and the number of prisoners in the jail and the need either for more employees or not more employees, and, you know, whether or not using part of the jail, not using part of the jail. I just don't wanna be reactionary, I'd like to be a little bit proactive on this if somebody comes down all of a sudden and says, you have too many prisoners in there, so you think we're, we'd be alright just doing that temporarily regardless? And I thought we also talked about it one time, if we actually had to house prisoners someplace and only, you know, like our long-term people that aren't gonna be going back and forth to court or whatever.
Well, I obviously haven't read this, I just saw it.
But you guys said this is, I, as I read this, I got it, and I thought it was like a nine, yeah, I thought it was just like a sixty or ninety day.
It is, that's all it is, is until.
I think he's, in case there's an emergency comes up here in the near future, that he's gonna have to shut the jail down. Now, that's, 'cause if you only got two jailers, you can't have any prisoners.
Exactly.
And this is just, you know, this could get awful pricey.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's the other one.
You know, when you have thirty prisoners.
Yeah, forty-five.
I think it's twenty-seven average right now, but at thirty-five, that's three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars a year.
And, and I guess that also was my thought, I would hope that it would be on a temporary basis, but is this also a time to look at, looking at arrangements with other counties to where they are more of the extended state plan?
Yeah.
You know?
They can't take them all in one jail either, I mean, it's got thirty guys move out.
I think this is a discussion we've gotta have with the sheriff.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's what I'm asking you on the sheriff's committee, is that a thing that, that somebody could ask you?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
I didn't know if I'd get this blown out.
I think we understand why it came up at this particular time, right?
There's a, yeah.
Um, I kinda thought that, when you told me about it, thought maybe that was, then when you told me that, I understand totally what he's.
He just wants to have a safety valve there, that we've already got something in place and we're not running around. Like you're talking about, if the Department of Corrections should come in and go, look, guys, we gotta do something different here. You gotta have a plan B.
And I just assumed if we had this, talked ahead of time with somebody and they're giving us twenty-five as opposed to somebody else giving us thirty-five, 'cause all of a sudden, ten dollars a day times, da-da-da-da-da.
I think that you're gonna find that's pretty reasonable.
Most of them, yes, that's true.
Most of them higher than that.
Well, the reason I said that is 'cause, okay, that's alright.
Well, we'll talk with him.
Yep. And we can discuss that at finance too, so we don't have to.
Was it next week we're gonna maybe get with him?
Yeah, oh, well, yes, next week.
Okay.
And we can try to dovetail that in with, with our meeting, okay?
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I forgot, with everything else going on, it's just, we need one more thing, Alan. We need one more thing.
I think I, I have one, could I, are we down to possible, oh, no, time to clarify one?
You have anything?
Well, I do have one or two things.
Okay.
Ned Jensen brought in a packet for Ben, and of course Ben's not here today, and it's regarding a program called Looking for Lincoln. And each county, there's a coalition of counties throughout all of east central Illinois where Lincoln would have made the circuit. And alls are asking for is a letter of support to get involved with Looking for Lincoln. And they have a sample resolution, there's no cost involved, it's more of a public awareness of the history of Lincoln in our county and other counties in east central Illinois. I haven't read through the booklet, but obviously there's been some thought behind it because of the amount of paperwork they have here, and they've given us a sample resolution. And again, they're just asking for a letter of support to be a part of Looking for Lincoln. And what that's gonna get us, I don't know, other than PR. So I'm, I just wanna mention that to you and I will get this to Ben whenever I see him next. And you may or may not see that on the next agenda for board meeting. The other thing that I have is, we, Wednesday is the deadline for the party to come up with a name to replace Dale on the ballot. And I just mentioned that to you, I don't have any, anything official yet. So, if and when I do, I certainly will let you all know. And then we'll just go from there.
Does anybody know if the Republican Party's got a meeting scheduled, what their plans are?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tomorrow, seven o'clock.
They're having a meeting to discuss this or come up with a candidate?
The goal of my past experience, it probably only would have committed it in there instead of opening up for the general, for the general Republicans to go observe what's going on, you know?
So, if they have a meeting Tuesday, and when's the day they have deadlines for them to give you a name?
Wednesday, four o'clock.
Okay, so maybe you'll get a call Wednesday morning?
Well, I'm hoping so, one way or the other, just so we know, yeah.
Okay, and then, I know in the letter that you sent out or something the other day, you were suggesting maybe by the end of the week, we have a special meeting to name this person?
That would be my suggestion, or as soon as we could get together, just so we can put it out there, keep it open and deal with it and then move on. That, that's what I would suggest. And I ran it past Mark, he thought it was a good idea too.
Okay, so you'll be in contact with Ben after, when you get this information and, I guess you're gonna have to make sure you get the information before we schedule a meeting?
Exactly, exactly.
So, you'll coordinate it with Ben?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I have a question. If they recommend the person, do we vote on the person, the board?
Two things, yeah, the, the party will recommend to the county board a person to fill out the remainder of the term, that's the, what we've been calling the two-month person.
Okay.
Which may or may not be the same person.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
To, to go on to the ballot for a four-year term.
Okay.
Now, if ideally.
It should be.
It'd be nice if it were the same person, but it technically does not have to be the same person.
One other question, we have six board members, what happens if you have a tie, three, one, the person, three don't?
Well.
Didn't I say we go in the back room with cigars or something?
Okay, I just, I'm just asking, 'cause there's scenarios that could come up, right?
Uh, sure, it could come up.
Well, the chairman gives the name of the board, he doesn't have to go with what the Republican Party tells him.
The chairman will, but it's still gonna be three-three.
I know what I'm saying, it's still gonna be three-three.
Basically, name a person and we, the board votes to whether it's accepted or not.
That's right.
Chairman might name me, I don't know.
He was talking about that.
Yeah, that'll, that's.
He was talking about that just last week, you mentioned your name.
Carl, I did remember one other thing, oh, Augie, are you done?
Go get your whole thing.
I, just to let you know, I was in required by law, was required by law Friday to send out military ballots, military and overseas voters. Those went out, we've had some email issues in the network, you know, uptown, but I think those are resolved now. Military ballots did go out, so.
So whose name was on the military ballot, Dale English, is his name still on that ballot that you sent up?
Well, that would only be to, no, we only had one request of military ballot in that district. And that ballot was, his name's been removed from the ballot.
Okay.
Okay, and in this case, I can do one of two things. Once I find out who the replacement's gonna be, I can send that person another ballot. But it's gonna be an uncontested race anyway, so. But at least I, you know, I can send them another ballot. I'll make contact with that person and let them know, once I know who the candidate is, if they would like a, a ballot, they can certainly have one, and then we will void the first ballot. They, they go to the extremes to satisfy military and overseas voters.
When's the deadline for you to get all the ballots printed, you know?
Well, uh, looking at the calendar, next week, middle of next week, first part of next week, our ballots drop dead, are going to the ground.
Uh, I wondered, Alan, if you would maybe pass that agreement by Bushu?
Send that on, that'd be better, can you just send this down, this agreement, that one, all of them?
Yeah, there's two.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Pass that by them. That's all I, I just, I'm trying to redeem myself.
Nothing else from any board members?
I, I would like to entertain a, a motion to go in a closed session, discuss appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of public body.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same thing, we're going to executive session, closed session.
Yeah, time to pause.
If there're gonna be any.
When there's no actions, no, no action, come out, yeah, okay, have any actions out, right?
Alan, you want, oh, finish up the meeting. That's fine.
We're back in, open session, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
You seconded that?
Oh, please.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same thing, we're done.
Yeah, I'll try to dovetail.